Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Nine of eleven present.
All right, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the Government Study Commission budget. Is there anybody for public comment? Anybody in the audience for public comment? We have Mr. Raybo on the Zoom. Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? This is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking.
Yes, I can, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, yourself and Mr. Thornton for showing up at the Study Commission meeting and giving your presentation about the proposed suggestions on amending the charter pertaining to conflicts with the section on the legislative branch. I would like to say that I kind of offered some of those suggestions over the years, but you presented them in a very logical and efficient way, so I thank you for that. But I'd like to clarify what you said in the beginning, that some people think the council, the number of council members is an oversized school board. I would like to clarify that because when I ran for council in 2015, I could be direct quoted as saying that the 11-member council was comparable to a school board on steroids. So I would like to just offer that little snippet of clarification there. Also, with regards to the funding, and this is what the public hearing is about, I would hope and pray that the council and the county administration, the county manager and the division heads are steadfast in preserving the budgetary oversight and the auditing controls that are vested by the county, by the state constitution, and by the state law, as well as the charter, with regards to, you know, budgetary oversight and auditing controls over all taxpayer funding. That is a nonstarter. That needs to be sacrosanct with the approval of the funding for the Study Commission because that is in the manual, that is in the state constitution under Article IX, Section Four, and that is also within state law, within the various codes, and also the charter complements some of the codes, the language within the state codes that give the counties budgetary oversight and auditing controls. So I think that that needs to be put into the ordinance and that can't be compromised or even given up. I hope that is in the language of the ordinance. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo, and I apologize for not citing you in my references when I spoke last week. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? All right, that public hearing is adjourned. We will now move into the second public hearing. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Nine of eleven.
All right, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance adopting the 2025 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzerne County. Is there anybody in the audience for public comment on the long-range plan? On the Zoom, we have Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking once again. On the capital plan, I would like to offer a suggestion, and I did speak to the county manager about this, as well as a few of the county council members over the years. I do, and even the ones that are currently on council, I do strongly recommend that there needs to be an intergovernmental cooperation between the county and the municipal authorities that the county has, the redevelopment authority, the industrial development authority, the housing authority, and even the convention center authority, because those entities can be leveraged by the county in terms of projects, infrastructure projects that are necessary that spur economic growth and improve quality of life throughout the county. It is in the, I do believe it is in the strategic initiatives plan that was adopted by council. So I think that needs to be specified throughout the committees, like the Infrastructure Committee of County Council, and also the Real Estate Committee, and the other committees that pertain to those that could work with the authorities, like the redevelopment authority, industrial development authority, housing authority, and the convention center authority. So that way, it could bring about revenue for capital, for restoring the capital fund without going into the general fund, as we have been over the, you know, over the years since Home Rule began. So I would hope that council keeps that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment on the ordinance? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. We'll resume at 6:01 with the voting session. Is everybody back? It's six, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's 6:01. All right, we'll just keep an eye for Mr. Haas because he said he would be joining via Zoom. All right, it is 6:01 PM. I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Can I please have roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Oh, there he is. Right in the nick of time.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Sorry for being virtual.
We just started roll call. You're good.
Fantastic. Thank you again.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Of ten of eleven present.
All right, thank you. We do have one ceremonial proclamation for Misericordia University's 100th anniversary. Whereas, for 100 years, Misericordia has committed itself to providing access to opportunities for learning in the mercy tradition of higher education. Its broad range of outstanding bachelor and graduate academic programs in the liberal arts and professional fields are steeped in a personal, student-centered approach to learning and are guided by the enduring charisms of religious Sisters of Mercy, Mercy, Service, Justice, and Hospitality. And whereas, all Sisters of Mercy worldwide trace their roots to their esteemed founderess, Catherine McCauley, an Irish Catholic laywoman who recognized the many needs of people who were economically poor in early 19th century Ireland, and determined that she and women like her could make a difference. And whereas, the Sisters vowed to serve the impoverished, sick, and uneducated. They came to the Wyoming Valley area of Pennsylvania in 1875, continuing their active ministry that had earned them the reputation as the walking sisters in Dublin. Sisters quickly opened a school for children and soon after, a night school for adults in the established coal mining region. Having secured a strong foundation of Catholic education, they recognized a great need remained. And whereas, the Sisters, with the support of local Catholic businessmen, purchased 100 acres of land in Dallas, Pennsylvania in 1914. A decade later, on September 24th, 1924, the Sisters established Luzerne County's first four-year institution of higher learning, College of Misericordia, whose name means "heart of mercy." And whereas, that day, 37 students began their studies, sharing the school's motto, "Moliere Fortis, valiant women trained in scholarship and spirituality." The university has been coeducational since 1979, and one century into its celebrated journey, Misericordia continues to provide access to superior education of those of every faith and status. And whereas, College of Misericordia attained university status in 2007 and presently provides more than 50 academic offerings through three distinct colleges, College of Health Sciences and Education, College of Business, and the College of Arts and Sciences. Misericordia prepares students for lives of leadership, consequence, compassion, and service to others, ever inspired by its mission and fidelity to that pursuit. And now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby honor, applaud, and congratulate Misericordia University on 100 years of exceptional higher education and extend our sincere appreciation. Congratulations, Misericordia University, for celebrating 100 years.
If there's a representative here, we have the proclamation for you to... Yeah? Thank you. All right, before we move on to the agenda, Attorney Skeen, can you please announce the executive session?
Yes. During this meeting, we had an executive session wherein we discussed...
This evening, prior to our meeting, we had an executive session wherein we discussed litigation matters and personnel matter.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move Agenda Item Number Three to the work session.
Okay, there's a motion to move Number Three?
I'd second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
No. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, okay. Roll call then.
Move Three to the work session.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krishnawski?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
I think there's more information, yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
I believe the purpose of moving this was because there was more information that we did not have prior to the meeting. I'm going to vote yes.
You only, you have seven no and three yes.
Okay, it fails. All right, any other deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. I do have one slip here for Dr. Christine Waisaki.
Hello, council members. I am commenting on Agenda Number Three, the sale in Butler Township. My name is Dr. Christine Waisaki. I live in Butler Township, in the area of the proposed sale. I wanted to comment on some of the ongoing issues that we have in this school district right now. As a member of the PTA, I'm very familiar with the Drums Elementary Middle School that is right there in that area. Right now, currently, we have closed two students, kindergarten, fourth, and seventh grade. They are at max capacity. They cannot accept anymore. We have multiple students that are being displaced throughout the district because even if they live in Drums, they can't go to that school. And that is because of overpopulation to our area. It's a rural suburban community. We keep continually developing our land, continually throwing up more and more developments without any resources or the ability to sustain the population that is currently there. And we already know that the Hazelton Area School District is spending $150 million for a school that is probably going to be overpopulated by the time that it is completed. On top of that, the area that is being asked to be developed is an environmental area with a lot of environmental resources, animals, plants, a lot of Pennsylvania wildlife. It is also an area where many individuals exercise, walk, you know, and taking away these areas and overcrowding our community is going to disrupt the mental health of our community and the well-being of our community. I think it is a better idea to promote wellness, to promote our community, to continue the history of our community, to reserve our rural areas in that area instead of looking for financial gains or for overdevelopment of the area. I know that some of this agenda has been pushed from people who are not currently residing in Drums, Pennsylvania, and I know that many of the residents in that area are against developing this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment in the audience on agenda items only? All right, on the Zoom, we have Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking. With regards to the development of Butler Township, I waited until this was on a voting session to make my comment because I can relate to what the good doctor said, because as a resident of Hazelton, there is development going on, or proposed development of townhouses and apartments in the terrace section of Hazelton, and that is near watershed land off of 424. And that will be a very dire consequence in affecting the, in terms of water resources to Hazelton City, as well as northern Schuylkill and northern Carman Counties, which, Mr. Chair, you being a first responder, that would affect the lives of 180,000 residents. And the first responders could tell you from that area that it would be a problem, to say the very least, especially if there's a severe drought. And a mild drought that we had three years ago, three summers ago, there was a mild drought and there was water restrictions. And now there's a new proposed plant being developed behind the Niagara Plant, which would affect that. So on to Butler Township, that is the same, they're facing the same situation, the same dilemma. How is it that you're going to subdivide the land and not take into consideration any of the resources there that could be affected and impacting the residents that live in Butler Township? That, to me, is reckless and woeful, or at the very most reckless and at the very least woefully ignorant. So I think there needs to be strategic planning and collaboration with zoning and with Butler Township to see where, you know, where are the areas that can be developed and where are the areas that shouldn't be developed. And I agree with the good doctor that most of the kids coming into Hazelton School District are not from Drums or the Hazelton area. They are coming in from New York and New Jersey, and their parents are still living in those states. So until the school district and the state can come to some kind of an understanding, this is just going to be more gas on the fire, so to speak. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on the Zoom? Okay, moving on, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 13th, 2024 voting session? Okay, second by Ms. Stevenson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Moving on to the agenda, number one, motion to adopt the ordinance approving the 2025 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzerne County. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, acting as the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau. There's a motion and a second on the question I would like to make.
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Haas. I think you were going to do the same thing I'm going to do, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm not going to...
No, no, go ahead. You go. You do it.
Just, I'd like to move that, to make an amendment that we exempt the property, the one property from Kingston on Main Street, is parcel number 34-G9SW, et cetera, because of the legal issues that we spoke about at that last work session.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Roll call on the amendment?
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Would everybody like to keep their motion in second with the amended, the amended resolution? Okay, all right. Roll call on the amended resolution.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving the subdivision of real property located in Butler Township. Okay, there's a motion and a second?
On the question?
Go ahead.
I would like to amend the resolution to say, instead of selling parcels to finish the subdivision of the land, for the purposes of correcting, the Job Corps water system is set outside of the property out of the lease, so there needs to be an easement for the Job Corps water system. The Butler Township building is on the county property. That needs to be subdivided and deeded over to Butler Township. And the leasing of the farmlands, we need a good legal description of the farmlands in order to be able to lease them out. I think most council members want to be able to correct the lease that's existing. In order to do that, we need a good legal description, and everything right now is on one parcel. So for those three things, if we can amend the resolution to say, no selling, just a subdivision, so we take the selling out of it, no property can be sold without council approval. At this point, no property is for sale, so no one can even come to us and offer a price. If someone did, we'd have to offer it to other people. There's no selling of the land, so we want to keep that out of it. The subdivision would be for the purpose of correcting those three items.
I'll second it.
Do you have specific language that you'd like, and where would you insert it into the resolution?
Well, considering I just got this information yesterday, I could have had something better written, and that's why I wanted to try to move it to the work session agenda. Um, I guess the best place would be to...
Should we do it in the, after the last whereas and in the now therefore? Or after that first, now therefore?
I will refer to the Office of Law to ask where that would be best inserted.
Okay, so, well, there would have to be more than one section.
May I?
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Can you just repeat the things you said?
Sure. The Job Corps water system is outside the established lease, and it is on county land. So we need to have an easement added for the Job Corps water system. I don't know if that's good term. Is that, okay. Butler Township, the property needs to be deeded. There's a building on our property, on the county land, but we need to have that subdivided and then deeded over to Butler Township. So... A legal description for the farmland lease.
Well, that was, that was the purpose of putting this on the work session, was to make these amendments or discuss them instead of doing it on the floor of the voting session.
And also, for the agenda submittal, we would have to add in there for the financing. That's another section. So I don't know if we want to just deal with talking about the resolution first, but the agenda submittal would have to have not to exceed 50,000. Engineering would not have to exceed 50,000. Title search not to exceed 10,000. The money is coming out of the engineering general fund.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas. I apologize, Ms. McDermott.
I'm sorry, I mean, Ms. McDermott. I'm sorry, if you want to continue there, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
Well, it's coming out of the engineering general fund, and there is enough money in there, which I had just double-checked with Ms. McCorr on the amount of money that's in the engineering fund. So the money is in the budget to do the rest of the subdivision. The other thing about it is we've already spent over $100,000 for this to come this far. In order to correct these three items, if we finish the subdivision, it will be done, it'll be complete. No sale of land has to take place.
All right, my suggestion right now would be if the members who made the motion and the second could withdraw their motions, and then we can amend the agenda to move this to the work session. Would that be okay?
Even before you do that, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If I could?
Yeah.
I was just going to suggest, this is brand new, and this was not part of the discussion prior whatsoever.
Yes.
I think this is in a totally different resolution, because this was, remember, the genesis of this was to sell these properties. I would just say, let's vote on this tonight, and then whatever the committee wants to do with these separate smaller issues, each of these seem like they're unique issues, to wrap them up into one doesn't, I don't know if that's, that makes a lot of sense to me. So I don't know how the rest of the body feels about it, but...
I'll remove my second. Okay. Well, there's...
We could just do a motion to reconsider. If the people who voted yes, to keep it on the agenda, made a motion to reconsider, to move it to the work session, they would have to make the motion to reconsider, like I could not do it, for example.
Or do you want us to totally remove it from the agenda? Do you want us...
We can make a motion to remove it. If we may.
Okay.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Haas that we should vote it down and then address these as three separate resolutions. I think that would be, to bundle three, like, each ordinance...
It's all in one subdivision, though.
Exactly.
Yeah, the subdivision really, I think, is the key piece of what Ms. McDermott is talking about. The selling of the property is what the, I think, the issue is that most people, including myself and the majority council, are having. But the subdivision, I don't personally...
So if we just take out, unless we just remove, sell the parcels and complete the subdivision?
Go ahead, Attorney Skeen, if you have a recommendation.
Right, so what I was hearing is that we need to have a legal description for the farmland.
Correct.
That could be done in and of itself. It doesn't need to be part of a subdivision. It has nothing to do with subdivisions, if you're looking to cut pieces out that you're going to sell. Other than that, if we need a legal description, we could do that separately. And again, this all costs more money. Supposedly, they were going to have all these legal subdivisions, these legal descriptions done earlier, so I don't know if they're, we have to watch the spending on that. And then to subdivide the property, the Butler property out, we do have to do that because that's their shed, and we're going to give them that piece of property. And then to subdivide the property, the Butler property out, we do have to do that, because that's their shed, and we're gonna give them that piece of property. And that would be the only part of everything that we've mentioned that is actually a subdivision. An easement, we're renting the property to them, and the only reason we needed an easement is if we are going to subdivide it so that somebody else is gonna own the property, they would need an easement to get their water. But if we're not selling the property and we're not doing the easement, and we're not doing the subdivision, there's no need for an easement, because we're renting it to them and we're allowing them to get their water. That'll be a different...
But it still has to be subdivided, correct?
That one piece, not the whole development.
Okay. So we've already spent a hundred thousand dollars to get to this point. If we complete it, it's, it's completed for whatever use in, in the future.
Mr. Sabatino?
Thank you.
Manager Croco, did you have something to add?
I just have a, a, a point of order, uh, it, to the Office of Law. Uh, would the, uh, changes that are being suggested need to be posted for the Sunshine Act? I mean, I'm not sure that we gave enough proper notice for the changes.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't be able to do that today, because that's a change of scope.
All right. I think, I personally think the cleanest thing to do would be everybody to withdraw their motions for us to move this to the work session, have the discussion, and then throw it on to, go ahead.
Question for Office of Law. Would each one of the three items that Ms. McDermott had said have to be its own separate topic? Like, so it'd have to be three resolutions, because you can only do one topic per resolution?
Well, depending on what council does, the easement is only necessary if you're going to subdivide the whole property, because then there's gonna be a different owner, or we'd still have the ownership, but in the event in the future that you were gonna sell a property, you'd need to put an easement in to protect their water rights, which wouldn't have to be done until whenever you were gonna sell the property.
Sounds to me like we're gonna spend more money to subdivide the property in the hopes in the future, a different council would sell the land. That's what, kind of what I'm getting from what you're saying at this point.
I'm not reading into anybody's mind, present, past, or future.
Okay.
However, later, in the event that somebody decides they want to sell it, you would have to give an easement to the people whose water rights are there. The person who's the farmland, we've been, we've been, um, leasing out for years and years and years without any sort of ju, any sort of description. So they know where they farm, we know where they farm, and they farm there. So I don't vote or make the financial decisions, but if that was gonna cost me fifteen thousand dollars to have somebody give me a legal description so I could rent the property to people for way less than that, when they already know where they're farming, it would seem to be wasteful to me. And then the, the only part that we would actually have to subdivide is the part that's gonna go to Butler Township, because that's not gonna be ours, it's gonna be theirs. So you don't need to subdivide the whole development to give away one little piece.
Mr. Sabatino?
So I would suggest that we vote this down and bring back just a resolution to subdivide the piece from Butler. And then, because everything else, according to the opinion of Office of Law, is a moot point.
Okay. Going back, Mr. Wilovich, you withdrew your second of the amendment. Okay. Is there any other second on the amendment? All right. Amendment fails for lack of a second. We'll now go back to the original motion for the resolution, not amended, as it is in the packet. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
We're voting on the actual resolution to do the subdivision with the original language in it as it stands.
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
One yes, nine no, fails.
Okay, thank you. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving the dedication of South Beisel's Road for the public use to Butler Township. So moved. On the question, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving the dedication of North Beisel's Road for public use to, uh, Butler Township. So moved. Second. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a gift agreement of, for a parcel of real property in Union Township to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Pennsylvania Game Commission. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the sale of a parcel of county-owned property in Dallas Township to Dustin Schweitzer. So moved. Go ahead.
You have to use your mic?
Your mic, Mr. Lescavage. Thank you.
Another parcel of property the county's selling for a whopping thousand dollars. It's fifty by fifty, which is twenty-five hundred square feet. That gives us forty cents per square foot, which is about what you would pay for aluminum foil these days. It's assessed at twenty-one four. It's crazy to me that we would just unload this property for that amount of money, and I think that we shouldn't, because as said in the past, they're not making anymore. It was also said last time around, because it was advertised, that we almost have to sell this property. That is not true, because in the packet, it says, "As required by Pennsylvania law, Luzern County will not convey any property if the transaction is not for fair market value, nor if it is determined not to be in the best interest of Luzern County." I don't think there's a parcel of property for a thousand bucks that's gonna make this county richer that we should sell for a thousand bucks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lescavage. Ms. McDermott?
In Dallas Township, that's Zone R one, single-family residential, that would have to be at least half an acre to build on. It is point one four acres.
Fifty by fifty.
And I called the Dallas Township zoning, uh, they said that it would have to have setbacks and everything like that. There's not enough room for it to be built on.
I understand that.
And how much do you think an acre of land would go for? I mean, at this point, a, you know, land is expensive, so even if it's like three to four thousand dollars, break that down. It's only point one four, point one four acres. I'm making sure that everybody understands that, point one four. So, you know, how much could it be worth?
Well, I could tell you in West Pittston, lots behind me that were that same size sold for twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Were they able to be built on?
Sure they were. They put a ranch sideways. Yes. But in addition to that, if somebody were next door to that property and they gain another fifty by fifty, what's it worth to somebody to increase their property? That, when you have that much more added, it's assessed at twenty-one four. Make us feel good and at least give us ten.
Every property that we have that has already gone through, th, these are the little parcels that are left that nobody wants. And they have come down to the fact that somebody says, yeah, I want to give them, let's put it back on the tax rolls. Let's get it off our liability. Some would put an offer in. That's what they think it's worth.
Let's put it out to bid.
We had, we had it already go through real estate and everything. It could have, it could have stopped it before at this point.
I would have stopped it when we had the meeting. You had it at noon, and I couldn't attend it, because I have work during the day.
And I have another meeting coming up September fifth, and everyone else already replied as of July eleventh, and I still have not heard that our meeting is next week, and I never got a reply back that you would be able to attend, and that's at six P M.
I'll be there.
Okay, good.
Yep. But I, I'm, again, I stand by what I say. There's no land, they're not making anymore. Whether it's a small lot or not, just make us fair market value like it says in that law. A thousand dollars at forty cents a square foot, you can't even buy linoleum, tin foil, nothing for that. That's ridiculous. It's not a fair offer.
I guess it depends on what other people would want to pay for, and no one else has come forward to want to purchase it.
Again, let's put it out for bid.
Mr. Sabatino?
Well, I agree with Mr. Lescavage on this. I think we've gone and done our due diligence, and we've asked this gentleman to do his due diligence. We should honor the agreement that we made, but on the real estate committee meeting coming up, we should talk about, going forward, we should have a, a minimum bid be the percentage of the assessed value. So I think while this is said and, and done pretty much at this point, going forward, we should have like a uniform method of, uh, raising the, the bid, the minimum bid. So say if this one was worth twenty-one thousand, you gotta think there's legal wrangling that has to go on, they have to advertise, they're getting a quick deed. So if we, if we started the minimum bid at five thousand, and then they end up spending another five, it'd be the ten thousand that you were asking for. So going forward, I think we should put a better plan in place, but we can't ask this guy to go and do it now after the fact, you know?
Just so you understand, it's clear in the law that it states that even if we had this guy go through all of this for a thousand dollars, somebody can come in right now and outbid him by ten grand and take that property, we're not obligated to sell it to him.
Understood.
That's, that's the way that works. I mean, so down the road, we could put a five thousand dollar minimum, which would be great, but if somebody offers sixty, he could actually be outbid at the end for eight or ten.
Right.
For, because, again, it's, it's, we should have a bid process. It should never just go to a, a person because they're adjoining owner.
Well, isn't it open for bid? Didn't we have a bid period?
These have already gone through all the, the channels. They've been offered, they've been bid on. This is what's left, so that's, that's why they're here.
Going forward, we should raise the minimum bid, so we get more money out of it.
I'd like to add to that as well. I mean, we have definitely gone through this process. We're almost complete with this process. I don't think it would be fair to this individual to be like, okay, now that we've done, put you through all of these steps, to say, all right, no. When we can, you know, right our wrongs now and move forward with a better plan with proposing twenty-five percent of that property cost, moving forward in the future when people are going to bid for some of these areas. I think that's fair. I think giving him the opportunity to go ahead and com, complete with this, knowing what we know now, okay, we don't all agree on that, fine. We can move forward with better procedures and how we're selling land in the future.
And I welcome, I welcome either one or anyone to, to come up with the language, and we can certainly change the procedure. I have no problem with that. And welcome.
Ms. Smith?
I agree. I think at this point, Mr. Schweitzer has been reliant on this, and I would like to see it back on the tax rolls, but I do absolutely agree that we need better language about what kind of bids that we will accept, because as Kevin, as I'm sorry, Councilman Lescavage said, he mentioned number seven, and if you read into number eight, it said fair market value is defined as the most probable price. And this is well beyond fair market value, so we need to learn from what our mistakes have been. I do believe we've created a reliance for Mr. Schweitzer here, so I think we need to keep our word, and it's important to keep our word. However, we need to be better moving forward.
Mr. Lescavage?
And just to be clear, I'm not attacking Ms. McDermott on this, because we had somebody who was a county manager for a short period of time that thought it was a brilliant idea to only contact the adjacent landowner, which was ridiculous, because I think we can all agree when you have county property, it must go up for bid. Or any property, vehicles or anything else. So that was, that shouldn't have ever happened. It did, so I agree, we gotta make this right.
All right. So motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no, passes.
Thank you. Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution granting an easement to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation over Luzern County-owned real property in Luzern Borough. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale of property in Luzern Borough to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania via the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in lieu of condemnation. So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number ten, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Dale Swain versus Luzern County. Second. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eleven, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds-awarded project for the Food Dignity Project.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, before we vote, just on the question, I just wanted to say that, uh, when we did our ARPA visit to the Food Dignity Project, I, I was extremely impressed by it, um, and, and how they use food instead of being wasteful, they purchase food that might not be completely perfect from, uh, uh, farmers, and they, they use it, and then they then use it obviously for the project. Um, so I, I applaud that. I thought that was a fantastic idea, um, and I support this wholeheartedly. Mr. Sabatino?
I'd just like to add that they support local farmers.
That's correct.
Like Luzern County farmers, they start there, and then they work their way out to other counties, so I think this is a project worth supporting.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 12, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Swattersville Little League.
So moved. Second. Motion in a second, roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 13, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the United Way of Greater Hazelton.
So moved. Second. There's a motion in a second, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 14, introduction of the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Manager Crocomo?
Yes, I'd like to introduce an ordinance amending the budget to create appropriate line items in order to account for the receipt of funds from the LSA grant to be received and expended, at least partially through 2024. More specifically, it's, it's an ordinance to create a line item to account for the receipt of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the LSA grant and of course, the ongoing expenditures.
All right, thank you, Manager Crocomo. That is automatically introduced. We'll move on to number 15, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an engagement letter with blank for audit services for fiscal year 2024 financial transactions. We will need a name. And I believe it's Clifton Larson. Is that correct?
Motion for CLA.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion in a second for Clifton Larson. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 16, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the Government Study Commission budget.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second on the question. Before we go any further, I didn't address this at the Government Study Commission meeting this past week because I didn't think it was the appropriate time. However, two weeks ago, approximately, there was a, a statement that was released by three members of the commission regarding this ordinance. And to say that I was offended by it is understating the case. As somebody who came of age and watched my school administrators be carried out in handcuffs, had to read about judges being arrested, to be called corrupt because of a disagreement in our philosophy on a bank account, I think was absolutely ridiculous. And moreover, the policy that we're asking the Government Study Commission to follow is a budgetary policy that was put in place because of what happened in the previous government. They said multiple times at their meetings that the previous form of government was horrible. The things they did were very bad. But they're somehow saying that this one thing that they did was okay because the previous two study commissions had their own separate bank accounts. We're doing this because of what was done prior to Home Rule. And, and once again, I just wanted to say how absolutely, you know, incensed I was by this and, and truly offended. But at the same time, I, I still respect the work that they're doing and I really hope that we can move past this. But I just, I really felt I needed to say something about it considering myself and Manager Crocomo were specifically named in that letter, despite the fact that neither of us or anybody on this council, as far as I'm aware, have publicly, privately, or otherwise tried to influence anything that's going on with the Study Commission, except in the official capacity that they have asked us to. So that's all I have to say about that. Does anybody else have anything? Ms. Smith?
How did you know, John?
I, well, your microphone was on, so.
I didn't even realize. I just have a question that I would like to ask. When a, when an invoice is to be approved, how exactly is that invoice approved from the Government Study Commission?
Ms. Rozelle, did you want to answer the question? Or Manager Crocomo, can you answer that question?
Well, the commission will review their invoices and they will vote on paying that invoice. And then it will be sent to the county and the county will pay that invoice based on the commission's approval.
Who is it sent to in the county?
Well, we will send direct information to the commission on how they should process the invoices.
So if I understand correctly, as I've had conversations with Manager Crocomo when I worked here, when we approve invoices in a department, the department head approves the invoice and it goes directly to the Budget and Finance and it gets paid as long as it's within the budget, correct? That's what you explained to me before.
Correct.
So it does not go to you. It doesn't go to Attorney Skeen. Goes directly to?
No.
The Budget Department. So will the Government Study Commission invoices also go directly to the Budget Department without being overseen by any member of this council, the county manager, or the head solicitor?
Okay, I'll, I'll be clear. I have been asked by the commission and my staff has been asked by the commission to perform many functions. Opinions and guidance from the Office of Law, opinion and guidance from Budget and Finance. I have not once interfered and told any of my division heads not to cooperate with the Government Study Commission. In fact, I have said the words, assist them as much as you can. The charter is clear that our Budget and Finance Division is in custody and control of taxpayer money and monies that are in the county budget. Our Budget and Finance Division Head, Mary Rozelle, will send specific instructions to the Government Study Commission on how to transmit the invoices. I can tell everyone here I will not review the invoices. I will not scrutinize the invoices. The same way that I have not sat in on conversations that Mary Rozelle has had with the treasurer of the commission, the same as the Office of Law having discussions with commission members or sending emails. I will, I have a lot of work to do. And scrutinizing the invoices from the Government Study Commission is not one of them.
I, I think you took my question as acerbic. It was not. Sometimes I ask questions because I believe there are people who need to hear some things and need to understand things that we, who do this work every day and who know the inner workings of it very well, know and sometimes take for granted. And I think sometimes people who don't sit in our positions need to hear things. And I think it was important for the public to hear that no one in this government would be looking at those invoices. That was the point of my question. That's all.
And the point of my answer was that no one in the administration, other than Budget and Finance, will be looking at those invoices.
And just, just to piggyback off of those points, two other points is that at the previous Government Study Commission, the majority of the commission did vote in favor of, of, you know, when approving their bylaws, that their, you know, having their own autonomous bank account was not going to be part of their bylaws. And, and one other thing, I know Manager Crocomo mentioned that the commission has asked the county for numerous things, Budget and Finance, the Office of Law, the Sheriff's Department. They've asked to use our space. They've asked to use our Zoom equipment, our electronic equipment, email addresses, badges and whatnot. We haven't sent them one single invoice or charged them for any of that. Nobody has even suggested that we want to do that. And as far as I'm aware, I'd like that to continue just so that they can continue to do the work and not have to spend money on those types of things. But, you know, again, like I said, to, to throw around those types of accusations after every single person that has been involved in this process in the county has been nothing but helpful, really to me is just, I found it just personally offensive. Mr. Liskavage?
I personally think that we have nothing to worry about as far as anybody overlooking the invoices for the simple reason, and this is gonna sound like a joke, but it's not, we do have a guy by the name of Walter Griffith who will scrutinize every invoice when he does his audit. And he wouldn't let his own mother rip him off ten cents.
That is true. I, I believe that. And Chairman, one more thing.
Yes.
I just wanted to note, so I've been doing research on this specifically. Government Study Commissions are not addressed in Home Rule charters and it's under chapter 29 of Title 53 in the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes. And I just wanted to let everyone know if they wanted to look for it, that's where they could find it.
Okay, thank you. Any other commentary? There's a motion in a second, roll call.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
You have nine yes, one no, passes.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody for public comment in the audience?
The only public comment I have is Government Study Commission invoices will be approved at a public meeting. So I don't know where the big secret is here. I mean, they're gonna be done at their meeting. So everybody's gonna see the invoices anyway. So whether I get to see them or manager or anybody gets to see them is immaterial. They're gonna have to vote on them at a public meeting. So I don't, I don't understand what the big deal and the big secret was. When we did it, they were all open for viewing. Anybody could see them, whatever they were paying, they were paying. And it was all crystal clear. There was no, like, big secret about it. So that's, that's all I have. Thanks.
That's on page 17 of the Home Rule Handbook.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Mr. Raybo on the Zoom?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking again. First of all, I would like to thank the council and the county administration for standing their ground and holding on to their constitutionally prescribed duties of budgetary oversight and auditing control. And especially when it pertains to the Budget and Finance Division Head and the county controller doing the audits and the budgetary distribution, or the fund distribution. I agree wholeheartedly with the manager, the controller, and with the Budget and Finance Division Head that it is their duties that are prescribed, not only in the charter, but by state law and the state constitution. So for the three that made, as, as you stated, Mr. Chair, two weeks ago, that basically didn't know what they were talking about to now come around and say, well, gee whiz, we didn't know what we were talking about. You know, cut us some slack. And I think I heard that sort of language coming from Councilwoman Bryn Smith saying that, well, we need the public to know about this. And she cited the Home Rule Manual, which I cited on pages 17 and 18. And I was hoping that maybe, just maybe, because hope springs eternal, that the three individuals on the Study Commission would take the time to read the manual and also to do the research that's necessary and that's required of Government Study Commission members instead of just saying, we don't know what we're talking about, so you gotta help us or we're gonna call you corrupt. That, that to me is unhinged and unbecoming of an elected official. So if you don't know something or you're not sure of something, there's, there's a solution for that. Ask. Ask nicely. Maybe you might get somewhere faster. Just, just a thought. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned at 6:53. We'll restart at seven o'clock. All right, council members, it's seven oh three PM. I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hawes. Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. LaScavage.
Here.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Wallowich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Nine of, excuse me, eight of eleven present. Correct?
All right, council members, it's seven oh three PM. I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hawes. Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. LaScavage.
Here.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Wallowich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Nine of, excuse me, eight of eleven present. Correct?
Eight, yes. Okay.
Eight of eleven, yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Ms. Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce, I'd like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance to be discussed at a later time.
Okay.
So a motion to introduce an ordinance.
Can you specify the ordinance?
Would you like me to elaborate? Sure.
Absolutely.
I'd like to introduce an ordinance of Lutheran County Council affirming protection for election. Not yet, but under Section 2.11 of ordinance requirements, an ordinance may be introduced by any member of county council. And then, once introduced, it may be given to the Office of Law and published, which is why I'm only making the motion to give it to the council such that the Office of Law can can publish it and have it published for as long as it needs to be.
Are you?
An introduction is a vote. Normally, when you introduce an ordinance, you would have microphone.
Normally, when you introduce an ordinance, you would then have four people approve it.
Right, and I'm going to ask.
And then you'd have a discussion the following meeting.
Exactly.
You're asking, you're asking to add an ordinance to the work session to discuss it? Not, you're not looking to introduce it, that would be at a voting session?
Correct, yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay. All right, that's.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you can't do that. Charter says clear. You can't discuss it until it's introduced.
That's why I'm introducing, yeah, well, that's why I'm trying to introduce it now so that we can have it published so that we can discuss it at the next work session.
You can only introduce it at a voting session. For an ordinance. Okay, could, I mean.
There's no voting in the work session.
Right, that's correct. I, I understand, you're looking to add this to the work session. You're looking to add this to the work session to discuss it at the work session before introducing it at a voting session.
Yes.
All right.
I thought I needed four people to just allow us to even discuss it.
That's, that's acceptable by the rules, correct?
We normally put, we publish it so the public could see what we're going to discuss before we start discussing it.
Yes.
So the public would not have had notice of this before, right this minute. So we're putting something on, so if somebody wanted to hear about this, they'd have notice of it so that they would come here. So under the Sunshine Act, we put everything that we're going to have at a meeting.
I, okay, I do have two, I have two questions on this. Ms. Smith, first question is, what, what is this ordinance? I see a copy of it right here, but I can't really, I kind of understand what it is, but what's the ordinance? And why didn't you just go through the regular process of just having it put on the work session? Like prior to the meeting? So that the public is able to view it?
Because I wanted the public to know that we are trying to introduce ordinances and because we are running out of time. It's a worker protection, it's a, I'm sorry, it's an election protection, it's an election worker protection ordinance. And frankly, we're running out of time. Last week, Manager Crocamo gave a very impassioned speech about how important this election is and how important it was not to sow dissent. And right now, the Pennsylvania code does lack major protections for workers, including and up to, for example, right now in Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania worker protection only goes up to Election Day. We have seen in the past that we need protections until the certification of the election and as Manager Crocamo so eloquently said last week, this will need, this will need time to be certified. And I believe that those workers should be protected until it is certified. There's also a missing portion in the statute where it is illegal to harass or abuse or attack a poll worker or an election worker. However, there is a loophole in the Pennsylvania code where there is no repercussion for such actions. There's been loopholes like that before. There actually used to be a loophole for Megan's Law like that. Sometimes the legislature just misses it, and they just missed it this time. And another large portion of this that the public needs to know is that this particular ordinance would also require the DA to let us know, to give us a report of any interactions or negative interactions that would happen during the election so that we are aware. Right now, they're not required.
I understand that, and I think it's a good idea. But we don't want to violate the Sunshine Act by having a discussion about an ordinance that we didn't let the public know about in advance. That's why we have the work session so that people can come here, comment, and be part of what we do.
I have a question. Joanna, you did, you did say that you wanted to, quote, introduce this but not discuss this until a later date?
Yes.
So we would not be having this conversation today during the work session?
Right. It was my understanding of reading the charter that I needed four people to vote to even get it on the table so that it would be published.
Only on a voting session?
Right.
Yeah, that would be, that's the, so like, like the manager, when she introduces an ordinance at the voting session, it's automatically introduced, no vote is needed. If we had introduced that same ordinance that she had suggested, we would just need the four votes to introduce it prior to the next meeting, which would be the public hearing and the vote.
I misread it, and I thought that it was the work session instead of the voting session.
The question again is, is the, you know, like, had it been added to the, just to the work session as a discussion point prior to tonight, it would be, no, there would be no problem here. I mean, you know, I don't.
Well, then, Mr. Ski, you're on notice.
If you give me a copy of it, I will discuss it and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'd like it to be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, and we'll, I mean, I'll, we'll make sure that's the first thing we talk about tomorrow in our agenda meeting is adding this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate his elaborating on this process. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it can be confusing. Okay, all right, any other additions or deletions from the? Yes, any other additions or deletions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Thank you very much. All right, first, we have received and discussed budget reports for July 2024. Ms. Rozell? I don't think it's on.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the first budget report that you have is your revenue report. Revenue earned is at eighty-one percent of budget or one hundred and thirty-six million nine sixty-three one oh four. Our tax collections are at ninety-three percent or one hundred and sixteen million one fifty-eight eight forty. Expenses are at seventy-two million four forty-three oh nine, oh oh nine, which is forty-five percent of the budget, which is favorable, given that we're at the end of July, which is seven months into the year. I'm only at forty-five percent. Next is your listing of the budget transfers that was requested by Councilman Hawes, followed by the accounts payable report, which is running at forty-five percent. Also seventy-two million four forty-three oh oh nine through July, which is slightly below where we were last year, which was seventy-five point seven million. The Treasurers' report shows a cash balance of two hundred and eight million forty-five thousand one eleven at the end of July. Cash balance at the end of June was two hundred and fifteen million, so it's slightly lower. We've had some ARPA payments that we've made in the month of July. Our interest earned for July is four hundred and forty-nine thousand fourteen. Of that, ARPA accounts for two hundred and sixty-seven million eight sixty-nine ninety-four. Year-to-date, and I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight sixty-nine ninety-four. Our year-to-date interest earned in total is three million two ninety-three eight twenty-one. The ARPA cash balance right now is at fifty-eight million seven ten. The ARPA interest earned year-to-date is at one point nine million, almost two million, one million nine ninety-seven. Total ARPA interest earned up to date is six point five million dollars. In addition to the reports, a recommendation has been made for the Office of Human Services audit, which, so we're moving forward with the contract process on that. And tonight, you've already voted on the CLA audit for the county audit. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Rozell?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution approving the dedication of Market Street Bridge over Gardner's Creek for public use to Laughlin Borough.
Good evening, council. We had recently replaced a bridge in Laughlin Borough and through the process of working with the Borough on the repairs, they had agreed to take the bridge. So we are starting the paperwork with the Borough. The legal descriptions, deed of dedications are ready to go. They are set to approve them at their next meeting in September. So once they approve it, we'll bring the material back to council with your consideration for allowing them to take over this bridge.
Any questions? This bridge, it was replaced, when you say recently, it was like 2018, right?
Oh, they, no, they just finished this, this year. It was, there were some, there was some additional work that needed to be done on the embankments of it. So once that was finished, yes, that, once all of that was completed, then they had agreed to take the road, the bridge, so.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Mr. LaScavage?
I just want to be clear, earlier I said about property, not giving it away. Any roads and bridges, I'd be happy to give it away for a dollar.
They're, yeah, they're going, they're going to give us the dollar.
One penny. All right, thank you.
We'll give you the commission on the job.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Infrastructure Committee report. Mr. Sabatino?
Well, as the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, I second that, what Mr. LaScavage said. But last Tuesday, no, what Mr. LaScavage said, no. But last Tuesday, we had a meeting and we discussed a few projects with operations and got updates on those projects. But the big thing to come out of the committee meeting last week was the Infrastructure Committee is unanimously recommending that we use the ARPA interest money to do these two projects. And there are two resolutions in there that go with each project for you guys to read. And if you have any questions, ask me. And then the third resolution that I attached, which is loosely related but not related, it is to put the rest of any interest money that isn't used into the reserve fund for next year in order to help Manager Crocamo get to the no tax increase budget for 2025. Any questions from anyone?
Any questions from any council members? So do you want to flesh out any of that further, or is that, is that good enough for discussion if nobody has any questions?
Nobody has any questions, but there is one change that I would like to make in the third resolution for the, using the remainder of the interest money to shore up the budget for next year. It says all such funds should be fully extended by 2020, or obligated by 2024. That is not true. The interest money does not need to be obligated. But we do need to spend all of the ARPA-related money, including the interest, by the end of December 2026. So we have to spend this money. We can't have any of it left over. So using it for these projects will bump other projects forward. It'll give us a better price on replacing the bridges if we book them this year for next year. And it'll give us the opportunity to bring other projects and put them in the place of these and spend that money on different projects going forward. And then with the reassessment of the Wyoming Valley Mall, we're going to have about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. Mary, three hundred and fifty thousand from the mall?
We don't have sold the mall yet, but I mean, we're looking at quite a bit more than that.
So using the one point four million dollars that's left over from this, it'll supplement that.
Okay.
Well, that's going to take a little bit longer, so we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Any questions, council members?
No, I think that's a good strategic plan thinking ahead into next year and how we can sort of cushion ourselves for future impact. So, yeah, I think that's great work.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, with that being said, is there any public comment? Public comment? Going once, going twice? Motion, oh, wait, hold on a second. Mr. Rosenkrantz, do you have a public comment?
I just wanted to thank the council for considering this funding for the Harris Hill Road Bridge. It's been an ongoing replacement project since 2021, if, if any of you are unaware. Just on behalf of Kingston Township, as the manager, I want to truly thank you for bringing this project forward and hopefully getting it replaced soon.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenkrantz. All right, Ms. Smith?
I'd just like clarity on Section 2.11 and where it says that it has to be, that an ordinance has to be initiated into, in, in only a voting session. I'd just like clarity on it if someone could.
Well, the ordinance to be introduced, it has to be introduced in the voting session.
But where does that say that in the charter, though? Because I'm reading 2.11 and I don't think that's how it's.
Would that? Yeah, is that, is that in?
So that's, it's implicit. It's not actually explicit in the charter.
I think it's in the, I believe it's in the bylaws of council as well.
Mr. Griffith is here and he knows this backwards and forwards, and also in Arabic. So it's implicit. It's not explicit in the charter. Right, but it doesn't say explicitly the voting session, but implicitly would be the voting session. Right, so implicitly.
Mr. Wallowich?
But we can talk about it at a work session if we so choose before it's introduced. But it would have to be publicly advertised before we discuss it at a work session.
Correct.
There's conversation going on we can't hear.
Okay.
I don't know why all the rags are on.
Okay, there was just some discussion regarding how an ordinance is introduced and whether it can be, you know, whether it can be discussed at a work session in the fashion that it was introduced tonight and that, I guess the answer would be that was not correct. However, we can introduce it at a voting session. Any other comments from council prior to our adjournment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.